Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you. This is our regular city council meeting for Montrose for Tuesday, December 6, 2022. It is 6:00 PM. We'll call the meeting to order. If you would all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is roll call, please.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Doug Glasper.
Present.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
Maggie Kusar.
Here.
Mayor Proton Barbara Bynum is absent. All other city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none. Next item on our agenda is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. And the call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council at this time? And seeing none, we'll move on. Item number six, approval of minutes. City council consideration of the minutes of the November 14, 2022 special city council meeting, then November 15, 2022 special city council meeting, and the November 15, 2022 regular city council meeting. And we entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Thank you. It's a consent agenda item, so.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasper.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, our historic preservation commission appointments. City council consideration of applicants Catherine Stroh and Darlene Mora for vacant positions on the City of Montrose Historic Preservation Committee. And we would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve that we appoint Darlene Mora for the vacancy.
We have Mora on there.
And Catherine Stroh as the alternate.
Oh, she is. Okay, well, I thought it was.
It's both of them. Just a motion to appoint Catherine Stroh and Darlene Mora.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Dave Frank.
Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasper.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
All right, for clarification, we have appointed Catherine Stroh as an alter member of the Historic Preservation Commission and Darlene Mora as a regular member of the Historic Preservation Commission. Both terms expire October 16, 2025, and Darlene's expires 2023. Moving on to item eight, lodging and entertainment liquor license transfer application. City council consideration of the transfer of a lodging and entertainment liquor license at 511 East Main Street from Precedent Productions Doing Business as Precedent Productions to The Temple LLC Doing Business as The Temple LLC for consumption on the licensed premise. And this is Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Before city council is an application to transfer a lodging and entertainment license from Precedent Productions Doing Business as Precedent Productions to The Temple LLC Doing Business as The Temple LLC. This is located at 511 East Main Street. This is a public inquiry for the transfer of the lodging and entertainment license. The permit is in order and the fees have been paid. From city staff's review of the application, we have seen nothing that would prevent council from transferring this license, notwithstanding this inquiry. Council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer for up to 30 days. At this time, I will ask the applicant to come up and introduce themselves to the council and announce their address for the record.
I'm Crystal Combs.
Jared Young.
And your address, please.
We actually bought.
Your home addresses.
Our home address is 140906100 Road here in Montrose.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, would you, do you and the councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this point, or would you like me to ask some of the preliminary questions?
Please ask the questions.
Absolutely. Could you please tell us about The Temple?
Yes, so we just purchased The Temple. We closed on October 20th, and we don't want to change what's currently going on there. It's an event center, concert hall, set up to do music, set up to do, you know, have a library. It does have a bar. It does have a kitchen, and we want to maintain what it already has. We already have events that have been pre-scheduled, out weddings, things like that. So we just kind of want to carry on exactly what it was and, you know, build it, build it up so this community has, you know, a place for events that is kind of unique.
Thank you. So the City of Montrose is serious about enforcing the liquor laws of the state of Colorado. Would you please describe how familiar you are with these laws?
Currently, we have studied a little bit on it, and we are planning on taking the class in January. We also do have plans, obviously, of having employees, which we will also require to take the class. We know that, you know, we do need to purchase from distributors in order, you know, to have the alcohol for the location. We need to card everybody that comes in without exception on that. We do have the allowance, we're told, for $2,000 worth of, you know, if we run out of something, we can run down up to $2,000 a year.
Thank you. So how do you plan on keeping minors from purchasing alcohol?
Carding them, hands down.
So you are familiar with the liquor law education and server training class?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And you understand that is the city's intention that all licensees of the City of Montrose and their employees attend that class?
Correct.
You said, how many employees do you have? Do you know if they've already taken this class at all?
Yeah, currently, we have, we're looking at one part-time employee. They have not taken the class, nor have we. We're told that it starts in January. The next one comes up in January. So we have every intention of all of us taking it in January.
Perfect. So you'd be willing to commit to the council that if the license is transferred, that you as the licensee, any managers, employees, attend such trainings within 30 days?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Any further questions from council?
I don't have any.
Seeing none, we'll accept public comment. And seeing none, we would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the lodging and entertainment liquor license at 511 East Main Street from Precedent Productions Doing Business as Precedent Productions to Temple LLC Doing Business as Temple LLC for consumption on the licensed premise.
Second.
Just motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasper.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item nine, ordinance 2606. City council consideration of ordinance 2606 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado amending ordinance number 2567, which appropriated funds for defraying the expenses and liabilities of the City of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022, set expenditures of the City of Montrose over and above those anticipated at the time of adoption of the original budget for the final fiscal year, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2022. And this is Finance Director Shaney Wittenberg.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. I don't know how to get the code to go away on the display, but maybe it'll just fade here in a minute. I just wanted to bring up the backup that I have for this ordinance 2606 for a final budget on several funds for the City of Montrose for 2022. So generally, when we adopt the budget for the upcoming year, there are items that maybe we didn't know about, or there's purchases that we've been working on but didn't know they would finalize in this budget year. And so we usually come to you with a supplemental budget in December for the current year. So that is what this ordinance does. It actually just keeps us from exceeding budgets, which the state of Colorado does not like. So we are not saying that we're going to absolutely spend every dime that's on this, in this ordinance, but it does give us that leeway, if you will. And we also generally have either revenues that have come in above what we budgeted and we're not dipping into reserves necessarily. It just was not appropriated for this budget year. So you can kind of sort of see that screen there. I can, I don't know if I can make it bigger because it's a PDF, but the general fund we are asking for an increase to $31.9 million. And a lot of this increase is due to land purchases or building purchases during the year, economic incentives. We've got a couple of grants that are running through the general fund, so pretty much pass through grants, but we have to expend the dollars. And then we replaced the light at Maine and Nevada, which we were not anticipating at the time of the budget, of course, because that was an accident that caused that. So that was a large expenditure that we needed to make sure we have enough budget for in 2022. The next fund is the Public Safety Fund, and we're just looking for that to go up to $15.7 million. So that's about a $400,000 increase, and that's really just to ensure that we can complete paying the bills for the public safety construction. The 220 fund is our downtown improvement fund. Basically, the fund balance in that fund is $106,138. And in 2022, DART did a great job of promoting the facade program, and so that's what these dollars are going to go towards. We did not have it budgeted in 2022. So the entire fund balance is being budgeted here. In the Public Education Government Fund, this is another one of those funds that we just don't always know exactly what we might need. It's really to be able to broadcast to the public meetings such as this. So in 2022, we spent $49,252 more than we had budgeted, so we're asking you for a supplement on that one. The Montrose Urban Renewal Authority, this is really for the horizontal improvements for the projects that are going in out at the Mura. And in 2022, it included Colorado Yurt, Mura Phase 2 infrastructure, and some of the Marriott Hotel possibly might come through in 2022. So you might see some of these as repeats in '23, but it's really out of our control as to how the developers develop those projects. The Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund is just a basic $1,000 increase, and that's really to cover the interest that we think we're going to earn and transferring it to the general fund by ordinance. And then the Special Improvement Revolving Fund, that again is treasurers' fees for collecting the Riverwood subdivision fees. And then Black Canyon Golf Course, this is really just due to supply increases and the fact that we, this is our second year running a restaurant, so just to cover some of the larger expenditures that we didn't anticipate during the 2022 budget cycle. And with that, that would be all that's included in the ordinance.
And just as a kind of a reiteration, this is normal. This happens every year. This is just to make sure we have that flexibility to cover those unanticipated expenses without exceeding our budget.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Any questions from youth council? Thank you. In that case, we will hold a hearing. I will open the hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council on this? And seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2606 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasper.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2607 on first reading, city council consideration of ordinance 2607 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado vacating a portion of the public utility easement. And this is City Engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So no changes since what we talked about at work session, but I'll give a quick overview for anybody who's tuning in the first time. So this snapshot here up on the screen is at the intersection of San Juan and Townsend, oriented north. The airport is there on the right of the screen. The city is working on a waterline replacement to replace an aged and undersized waterline that runs between, kind of comes down the San Juan area and runs north towards the airport. The plans are complete. We're ready to go. We'll be doing it with in-house crews. And whenever we do these projects, we look for opportunities to improve the alignment, to make it more efficient for construction liabilities, but as well as access and maintenance of the lines. And this is what's prompting this change here. So this property here, a lot of people know, it's currently a drywall supply company of Montrose. The, a lot of people know it as the old movie rental place here on Townsend Avenue. There's an existing six-inch asbestos cement waterline that runs through the center of the facility, which over the years, various buildings have encroached close to that to where, you know, doing its replacement through the middle of the yard would be pretty disruptive for both, you know, the owner there and challenging from a construction standpoint. A better option is to move it to the eastern property line. And so this ordinance vacates the old easement on the understanding that the owner will be granting us a new easement along the eastern side. So we're working with them on that. The kind of sequence of events would be, we enter into an MOA with them that outlines the framework for all of this. They grant us an easement for the eastern side, which is this blue line shadowed along the drawing here. We construct the new line, because we can construct it while the old one stays in service, bring that new line into service, switch over all the services along the way. Once that's done, we can then, under this ordinance, record that and formally vacate the center easement here. So, you know, this is kind of the original authorization for that, but the action and recording on it won't take place until all those other pieces fall into place, so. So the ordinance is kind of the legal piece to get that ball rolling. So with that, happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Any questions from youth council? In that case, we will hold a hearing. I'll open the hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council on this issue? And seeing none, I will close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2607 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasper.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
I just spent an hour with 20 screaming kids.
All right, moving on to ordinance 2608 on first reading, city council consideration of ordinance 2608 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado amending Title III, Chapter 1, Section 6 and 7, correcting the codification error. And this is Assistant City Attorney Chris Dowsley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. As stated, this is really just correcting a codification error. It is moving one subsection from Section 3-1-7F to 3-1-6F. It is simply because this subsection speaks to the fees as opposed to any remedies for non-payment of fees. This was not brought before council in a work session simply because there is no substantive change. It is literally moving one section to the correct section. As council asked us a few months back, and by us, I mean Ben and I, any of these errors that we see, to clean it up as quickly as possible. So here it is, right in front of you.
Perfect. We appreciate the housekeeping.
Of course, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? Maggie? All right, thank you. In that case, I will open a hearing. Is there any member of the public would wish to address this issue? And seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2608 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasper.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And moving on to ordinance 2609 on first reading, city council consideration of ordinance 2609 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado disconnecting property at 67365 Sunshine Road. This is Planner 2, William Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of city council and members of the public. As stated, this is an ordinance regarding the disconnection of property located at 67365 Sunshine Road. A disconnection, also known as a de-annexation, is the process in which a property that is currently in city limits is removed from city limits, which reverts its jurisdiction back to Montrose County. This request comes from the property owners, Gary and Diane Folks, and is approximately 25.82 acres in size. These requests, they don't come in very often, but when we, when they do, we do look at them on a case-by-case basis. Just as the main driver for annexation is connection to utilities, the lack of utilities is really the biggest thing that we look for, for a de-annexation. In this case, the property in question is located outside of the City of Montrose Water Service Area and is serviced by Tri-County Water. Also, as a general rule, if a property owner is seeking to develop a property within 400 feet of an existing city sewer line, the property must be annexed and served by City Sewer. There is some nuance to that, but that is the general rule. This property is well over 400 feet from the nearest sewer line, by my estimate, over 2,000 feet, as the crow flies and practically even further. For those reasons, the city is recommending approval of the disconnection ordinance. A disconnection takes the form of an ordinance requiring two readings by city council. The property was originally annexed into city limits in 2008 as part of the emerdeur addition. City staff finds that there are no deleterious financial impacts to the city with this disconnection, and staff recommends approval of ordinance 2609. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Go ahead. Go ahead. You're older than I am. Go ahead. I guess more than a question, it's perhaps a comment, and I think that anytime we're looking at a potential disconnection from the city, there have to be unique circumstances that dictate that. As you said, we look at this on a case-by-case basis, and I take it from your report and everything within the file that you've provided us with, that you do believe that those unique circumstances exist such that would, in your opinion, justify the disconnection.
That's correct. Yeah, as you stated, we look at it a case-by-case basis. They don't come very often, but occasionally, and this is obviously the first one I've brought to you, so.
And that no precedent is being set by doing this?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And the question I had, Will, is we're not aware of any other developments in the area that might be asking to be annexed into the city that would, this would affect in any way, shape, or form?
I have not received any applications for annexations in this area. That's not to say that there won't be any in the near future, but as of right now, no planned annexations.
Thank you. Any other questions? Maggie's got that deer-in-the-headlight look a little bit, but, sorry, I'm going to keep asking you, give you the opportunity to participate. All right. If there are no further questions, then we will hold a hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council on this? And seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2609 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a first and a second, and roll call vote, please.
Jay, excuse me, Dave Frank.
Yes.
Doug Glasper.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item is ordinance 2601 on second reading, city council consideration of ordinance 2601 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado amending the zoning district designation of 8206650 Road from R, excuse me, R2 Low Density District to R5 Low Density Manufactured Housing District.
Mr. Mayor, since I live right next to this, I'm going to exclude myself.
Thank you. Mr. Glasper is recusing himself from this item. Give him a moment to clear the room. This item will be handled by Planning Manager Jase Hochwald.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the, excuse me, thanks for the introduction there. So the item I have before you tonight is really the second reading of a rezone request for the property located at 8206650 Road from R2 to R5, as you'd indicated, Mr. Mayor. The applicant for this request is the property owner, Rudy Vargas. Planning Commission did hear this item at their October 26 meeting and voted unanimously to recommend approval to city council. As I mentioned, this did go to first reading to you all actually just a couple of weeks ago, so I'll actually just expedite this here because I know we've got a couple other items on the agenda. So the subject property here is outlined in red, kind of at the top of the screen there. It totals 1.1 acres in size and currently sits vacant. It's currently zoned as R2, which refers to low-density districts, and the applicant is seeking a rezon to R5, which refers to low-density manufactured housing districts. This is really in order to construct a modular home for the site, which would not currently be allowed. On this slide is the zoning criteria. In short, the rezon must not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, and the request must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. The R5 zone district, which is the proposal this evening, is intended to provide a quiet, low-density development for single-family residences. Also, this district does allow for manufactured housing, which is really, again, the primary reason for this. On the slide there is just a picture of the subject property. So here's the comprehensive plan future land use map. I've got a larger version on the right, a more zoomed-in version on the left of the subject property. As shown, the subject property is listed as residential mixed density low in the future land use map. This district provides primarily for single-family homes and also encourages small amounts of attached residential dwelling units. In short, the proposed zone of R5 generally does conform with this future land use designation. All right, and then we've got the comprehensive plan goals here. I'm not going to read these verbatim, but staff does find that the request does promote infill, redevelopment of a underutilized site, and also promotes housing variety by allowing for the manufactured housing component here. And then to cap it off, based on the preceding information as well as the staff report, staff has found that the proposal meets the rezon criteria as outlined in Section 4-4-29, Subsection A, is in compliance with the comprehensive plan and is compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. In conclusion, staff and planning commission both recommend approval of the rezon request tonight. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll accept public comment. And seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2601 on second reading as presented. Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank.
Yes.
Jay David Reed.
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry.
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote of all present.
Thank you. If someone wouldn't mind retrieving Mr. Glasper. Up there he is. He could sense us talking about him.
Not much to talk about.
Not much to talk about.
All right, moving on to item 14 is ordinance 2602 on second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2602 on second reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado for the annexation of Hilltop North Edition. It's Planner Two, William Reese.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As you know, this is now the fourth time I've presented this application to City Council, so I will be brief, but I'll go through my slideshow here in case there's any interested members of the public. As you know, this is the second reading of the ordinance for both the annexation itself and the zoning, and this is the last step in the annexation process. The property in question is located along 6600 Road, north of the intersection with Locust Road. The property is approximately 10.01 acres in size, and it is within the city's urban growth boundary and sewer service area and in Tri-County Water Service Area. More than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to existing city limits. Surrounding city properties are currently zoned R4 High Density District, and the property is bordering properties outside of city limits. The applicant is requesting the zoning designation of R4, which allows for variable densities ranging from single-family to multifamily residential development. Here is the annexation plat. We do also have the printed MyLars here tonight. A larger version is available through our public meetings portal online. I know it can be difficult to read on here. This property is located within Growth Area 2 according to our comprehensive plan, and this indicates that the property has some level of or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. And so, in conclusion, the area is urbanizing and meets local and state annexation policy. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare and the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval on second reading of ordinances 2602 and 2603. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. In that case, we would accept public comment. And seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2602 on second reading as presented.
Second.
Motion and second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item ordinance 2603. We just had that presentation on that. It's the same item, just on the rezoning of that addition to R4 High Density District. So you do have anything more to add?
I have nothing further to add, thank you.
Thank you. And accept public comment. And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2603 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item 16, ordinance 2604 on second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2604 on second reading. An ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado designating the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company, 44 South Grand Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Statute 4-15 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. Planner Two, William Reese.
Thank you again. As you know, this is the second reading of ordinance 2604. Nothing has changed since the first reading. The Montrose Electric Light and Power Company building was built in 1904, which means the building is old enough to be included on the city's historic register. The building is also eligible due to its association with the history of utilities in Montrose, as well as its architectural style. The building is representative of industrial construction in the early 20th century in its brick composition, flat roof, cornice with molded brick, and segmental arched openings with stone lintels with keystones. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 2604 on second reading. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Accept public comment. And seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, ordinance 2604, on second reading, designating the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company at 44 South Grand Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to 4-15 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. All right, he's getting excited. Ordinance 2605 on second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2605 on second reading. The ordinance, the City of Montrose, Colorado designating the Montrose Radium Ore Sampler, 112 West Main Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to 415 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. William Reese.
Thank you again. Once again, nothing has changed since the first reading of ordinance 2605. The Montrose Radium Ore Sampler was built in 1918 and is eligible due to its association with industrial history in Montrose, having been erected as reportedly the only commercial radium sampler in the world. The building reflects Montrose's history as a radium ore market, and its size, height, and gabled roof design reflect its use as an industrial facility. Since the first reading, John Horn, who's the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, John Horn and I had the chance to find some additional information about the building, which doesn't affect our recommendation, but I thought it may be of interest to City Council and the public. As mentioned last meeting, the ore sampler was built primarily by Onward Barlow Wilmarth, who was born on February 11th, 1882, in Redford, Michigan, and he graduated from the University of Michigan. He first moved to San Miguel County to become the manager of the modern gold mine. He saw the need for the radium ore sampler in Montrose due to the fact that previously the radium ore would be shipped to either New York or Europe to be tested, and the value wouldn't be known until it arrived there. Also, at the time, 95% of the radium ore produced in the United States came from mines in Montrose, San Miguel, and Mesa Counties, Colorado, as well as eastern Utah. Wilmarth ran the sampler up until 1923, when he took a job as the general manager of the Kelso National Mining Company over in Idaho Springs, and he would later become the mayor of Georgetown, Colorado. As a result of unpaid taxes by the radium ore sampling company from 1925 to 1927, property was sold by the county treasurer in 1928 to the Western Colorado Power Company, and that is when the two properties were consolidated. These two buildings were later sold to Walter Henry Hill III in 1971, which is when the property was developed for commercial use. I have nothing further to add, but staff recommends approval of ordinance 2605.
It's always fun hearing that little bit of deeper history on things. Any questions from council or youth council? In which case, we'd accept public comment. And seeing none, would entertain a motion.
Let me try again.
Sure, see if I can get it.
Glad to get his glasses on.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2605 on a second reading as presented.
Good job.
All right, we have motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item 18. Vector 3, number 361 Jet Vac Repair. City Council consideration of repairs to Vector number 361 Jet Vac by Ferris Machinery Incorporated for the not-to-exceed amount of $105,000. And this is Utility Manager Jay Breeze.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this, as we discussed in the work session, this is one of our Vector trucks that we use for cleaning sewer lines as well as vacuum excavation for waterline repairs, meter pit maintenance, and a lot of different activities, because it excavates without damaging any surrounding utilities. In September, excuse me, we had a catastrophic failure of the blower system on one of the units that was scheduled for replacement this year. But the units that are on order have been delayed and won't be delivered until sometime first or second quarter of next year. So when we had the failure, we took it up to Grand Junction for the Ferris Machinery, who is the Vector representative, and had them evaluate the cost of making those repairs. The cost of making those repairs, their estimate is at $98,995, which created concerns for us, because we got a unit that we're getting ready to take offline, and we're gonna be investing nearly $100,000 in repairs on it. So we started looking at what our options were. We started looking at retail value, resale value of that equipment in the condition that it was in, without the blower operational, and we're basically told that it was pretty much salvage value of maybe about $15,000. Whereas if we made those repairs and had it operational, it would have a resale value of near $150,000. So the economics show that it makes sense to make those repairs. Additionally, the estimate was that we can have those repairs done and the truck in operation at least six weeks prior to the delivery of our new, of the new replacement Vector. So in addition to the economic benefits of making those repairs, we also get six weeks of usable time, or maybe more, out of that piece of equipment, and it's a little more certain when that repairs can be made as opposed to when our new trucks will be coming in. So with that, we've evaluated everything, and using, having a little bit of contingency in order to make sure that we can proceed on items that maybe weren't identified in the estimate, we've recommended that we approve repairs up to $105,000 with Ferris equipment.
And with our current status of delivery of vehicles, it could be much longer than six weeks, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's our concern, is that all the supply chain challenges, things just keep getting pushed back, and we can't get a real good commitment. We get an estimate from them, but every time we call them, it seems like that estimated time before delivery slips back further and further.
So we're getting a lot more usable time out of this, even if it, truck delivers on time, we'd still get at least six weeks of.
Correct.
Any other questions from council?
We need it.
We need it.
Get it done.
Yep. All right. I would accept public comment. And seeing no public comment, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the repairs to the Vector 361 Jet Vac by Ferris Machinery Incorporated for a not-to-exceed amount of $105,000 as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 19, City Relocation, City Hall Relocation Project Contract Amendment. City Council consideration of the authorization of $1,135,000 for the second phase of the City Hall relocation project, including the amendment of a contract with FCI Contractors, Inc. as a construction manager slash general contractor. And this is Public Works Manager Jim Shide.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So yes, this is for the second phase of our City Hall relocation project. And as a reminder, this, the first phase of this was approved earlier this year. It's been quite the fast-track project. And that's where we approved the initial contract with FCI Constructors, who was in the first phase of this project. And then we included in our 2023 budget the second phase, which we're requesting approval of tonight. So we've received the construction documents, which we're building off of now in October of this year, which is, again, quite fast-track, considering we started design in July of this year. FCI was able to start demo work with some of the walls and things in the building that need to be replaced in October of this year as well. And that's where we're able to really utilize that CMGC process that we began at the beginning of this process, that had we not selected that method, that would have been much later. We probably wouldn't have even started work at this point now. So we are underway on Phase 1. It's progressing very nicely. FCI is doing a great job, and John Luffler, our project manager from FCI, is here tonight. And so we are bringing this to you, this recommendation now, in December of this year, to get as, an early start as we can. We're trying to keep FCI and the contractors that they're utilizing rolling. We don't want them to have to stop and wait for the 2023 budget to be implemented. We would award and amend contracts now. The work being done would be done in January of '23. So this recommendation is requesting the budget of, that was in our 2023 budget, which was approved, which we, so we recently talked about this, just seems like last month. And then, of course, we would amend contracts that we have in place, including FCI's, and then move forward with the work. The Phase 1 and Phase 2 work are scheduled to be completed. We're hopeful for February, but we are looking at some items that are probably gonna push that time a little bit into March possibly, and even later. But we are, we have the goal of being completed first quarter of the year. The potential of the X-ray of the building is kind of what I've been calling Phase 3, and is not included in this budget, but is a, we're working on a conceptual design for that now. Once we get a conceptual design done, we'll put a rough-order magnitude cost to that and then bring that back to council for further discussion of a potential Phase 3. So with that, nothing else has changed since we discussed this at work session, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I just think it's great we've gotten to this point.
It's moving very fast.
It is.
So it's nice, it's good idea to keep ahead of the curve. All right. I accept public comment. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the sum of $1,135,000 for the second phase of the City Hall relocation project, including the amendment of a contract with FCI Constructors, Inc. as the construction manager, general contractor, as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glasbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulaberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And moving on to the important one. Yeah. And I'm surprised you're not wearing a tie for this, but we could cut you a little slack. Item number 20, City Council consideration of $70,000 in expenditures to repair a damaged dump truck, unit number 256. Jim Shide.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Yes, so one of our dump trucks was severely damaged in normal asphalt operations earlier this year. The truck has been determined to be totaled, and either way is inoperable in its condition. Unfortunately, the truck is very critical to a lot of our operations, including asphalt repairs, but also our snowplow operations throughout the winter. So we've considered several options of how do we get a truck to replace this one? And through several things we've evaluated, really came down to repairing the truck we have is really our best option and the only quick option that we have. We, fortunately, were able to find a cab to replace the cab on the truck and a vendor that's able to replace that for us in a reasonable amount of time. We're told about five weeks, we can have this truck turned around, which would be great, because then we should be able to use it for a significant portion of the winter operations, other than tonight, probably. So this would be funded from our fleet fund. This is one reason why we have a fleet fund. And there, as far as supplemental budget, which we discussed a little bit tonight, this would not need to be supplemented, as there is quite a bit of our fleet purchases this year that were not completed, again, due to issues of orders being delayed. And so that's why you did not see this on the supplemental budget, because it's actually able to fit within the current 2022 budget, and this repair would begin immediately. That's also why this was expedited a bit, as it was in work session this week and coming to council tonight, is to help expedite that process and let the. to council tonight, is to help expedite that process and let this truck get fixed as quickly as we can.
Thank you. I think just that both of these items highlight the fact that with the supply chain issues, it's made it so difficult for us to get replacement vehicles and the vehicles that we ordered a year or two years ago, that it makes better economic sense and is better use of our stewardship of our funds to replace damaged equipment and try to repair, or replace it, repair it rather than replace it.
Correct. Yeah.
Any questions?
I think it's good, too, Jim, to point out that this was not caused by any of our employees, that it was another problem.
That's true. At a, yeah, asphalt plant here in town, unfortunate sequence of events caused our truck to be damaged by the asphalt that it was picking up.
Do we have any other truck on order for the future, for a couple of years from now?
Um... No, actually, so we don't have any dump trucks on order right now. I actually will be bringing a recommendation to you at the next work session to discuss dump truck purchases for this coming year. We have a bid out right now for new dump trucks, and actually haven't even opened yet. It opens tomorrow, and then once it's opened and we evaluate it, we'll bring that as a recommendation to council for purchasing new dump trucks.
Okay, thank you.
I also wanted to point out that you did investigate purchasing a used dump truck, but there just isn't anything that is the same level of gear that we need?
Correct, yeah, nothing that fits into our fleet and our operation that would truly be utilized very well, really likely not used at all, just due to the plow, the sander, and then also our asphalt operation that we do throughout the summer. Requires a pretty unique truck.
Perfect. Any other questions? In the case, I'd accept public comment. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve seventy thousand dollars in expenditures to repair a damaged dump truck, unit two-fifty-six as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Get her done.
Thank you.
All right, staff reports. Everybody's kind of got the deer-in-the-headlights look again, but nobody's jumping up. Youth City Council comments.
Hello, I'm Maggie from the Youth City Council, and I'm the treasurer. And so far, Youth City Council has started a project at the Nursing Home Valley Manor Care Center, where we go every other Sunday and spend time with the residents there. And then this Sunday, we're also creating a challenge on our Instagram called Seven Days of Service, where we challenge the community to do something positive each day, and there's a different challenge each day, and that's all we have going on right now.
Excellent. We're glad you're here tonight.
Thank you.
City Council comments.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just reiterate my thanks to the city staff for putting on a great production at our Christmas parade this past weekend. I thought it was excellent, and a lot of hard work from staff I know went into it, and so thank you all for bringing us to the parade again this year, and it looked to me like everybody enjoyed themselves.
Yeah, I'd like to comment, because I know it's extra work for our PD folks and the public works, and what a great job we got on that.
And it was a lot of fun.
Yeah, I'd like to thank the staff that's out there shoveling the sidewalks and driving the trucks that are throwing the snow off the streets so that we can get around safely.
Yes, that really wet snow, that's going to be, it freezes, that's going to be...
Pretty slippery.
Yeah, pretty slippery.
That's helping, you know, it helps add to potholes.
It does. All right, well, if there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
That's pretty quick.
A lot of second...